March 31st, yes.
No April Fools yet.
Nope, tomorrow.
Welcome to the March 31st, 2025, Stoughton Meeting of Livonia City Council. Would everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by the Honorable Councilwoman Carrie Bzinski?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilwoman. All right, so this meeting sets the agenda for the 2014th regular meeting, which is a voting meeting that will take place on Monday, April 14th, where tonight's items will be officially voted on. I can note that we are missing Councilwoman Laura Toye. And with that being said, I'm going to jump right into audience communication. This is 30 minutes that have been set aside for items not on the agenda. If you'd like to come up and speak, please make your way to either podium. Name, address, and you've got three minutes.
Steve King, Coventry Gardens. Yeah, I just wanted to give a shout out to Bob who came up here. Talked about the leaking skylights at the library. I attended Carrie's coffee and I brought Bob there and his buddy Eric, who maintains the skylights at the mall. And I directly challenged the director who was hired in 2021, "Why are you okay with those skylights leaking when there is a fix? And there's a guy who can do it, and he's a Livonia resident." And so I ask again, "Why are we okay with those skylights leaking?" Over the weekend, they had some of our... They hosted a community of people that provide services to all special need population. It was really great, well-attended, and there was a woman there with water dripping right on her table. And again, why? It just doesn't make any sense. And the last thing, if I got a minute. The chief wrote an editorial, and it's in the Livonia Magazine. And there's a narrative being formed in the city. I think it's a false narrative that our buildings are unsafe, they're dangerous. In fact, here's the words: crumbling, dire need, inefficient. These are the loaded words that are being used, and that's disingenuous. I've been in the police station, I've done training there with Homeland Security. I have friends who are police officers. I have friends that work there in that building every day, and they are not in danger of that building falling down on their head. So, something he said that I thought was interesting in his editorial. "The station feels more like a fortress." But then he goes on to say, "It is insufficient for ensuring safety." So, that's kind of, if it's a fortress, well then, isn't that the safest place to be? He talks about the asbestos flooring, and this is a red herring, and people do this. They did it on the school, when I was on school board, they did it there. Asbestos flooring, there's nothing wrong with asbestos flooring. You'd have to grind it up, powder it, and put it in your oatmeal for it to bother you. There's nothing wrong with asbestos. We've used it for hundreds of years, as long as it stays in its substrate. So, that's a red herring. And then he mentions surrounding communities are constructing new facilities. And I think that kind of gets to the heart of it. And I've seen the one that Brandon's building, and I know Novi's looking at one for $120 million. But there's a whole lot of hurt coming our way, and it's going to start this Wednesday when the tariffs go in place. And everything is going up. So, I think we are way over our skis on this thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. Good evening. Name and address, three minutes.
Hi, my name's Barbara Glover, 3328 at Myrna Court. I just wanted to say I was at Carrie's meeting as well, and I thank Carrie for having it. I like her meetings. I don't get to come to them all the time, but I'm going to try to make more of an effort. I've been ill. I just wanted to say that I'm concerned that the building renovations for the library have been put off, was my understanding coming out of the meeting, for the bathrooms. There's, all the bathrooms in the library, including the one in the atrium, are not handicapped accessible. So, if you're in a wheelchair, you cannot get into...
If you're speaking on an item...
Oh, I don't know if it's an item, I'm sorry.
It is an item.
Okay, I'm sorry.
If you would not mind if it's to that specific item...
I can come back.
Yes.
Okay, which item is it?
Item number four.
Okay, sure, no problem.
Thank you.
I have one, I just didn't, it didn't translate for me.
Nope, nope, you're totally good, totally good. Hello again.
Hello again. Ralph Brown, 15642 Gulfview Street, Livonia, Michigan. This is not about the bathrooms, but it is about the library, like I talked last time. I'd hate to see any services cut at the library. Like I said, all the children's programs, the seed library that helps people start gardens, the lectures, the movies, the concerts they hold at the library, people that use the computers. I mean, there's so many services, they even lend tools out to people, I understand. So, I'm just here in support of the library, and I'd hate to see any of their services cut for any improvements. I know there's a huge number of people that go there, they love it. You don't get any complaints from there, they're all doing a good job. You guys are doing a good job, and I just want to see that library stay open with their services.
I appreciate you coming in and talking, a lot of positive energy, it's always good. How are you?
Great. Christopher Martin with some more positive energy.
Uh-oh.
Thank you. I like the atrium. It just has to be re-glazed. Come on, folks, okay? It's kind of a knee-jerk reaction that the city does when something needs to be fixed. We've got to, we've got to do something spectacular to it, or we've got to tear it down and build something new. And talk about building something new is that the millage that will be forthcoming in August, after watching that meeting and sitting through that, I would encourage each and everyone to vote that down, that millage increase, okay? I wouldn't be in favor of that one bit from what I saw on this downtown renovation, or whatever term we want to use now. It seems to be a new term every couple of months. But I'm definitely against wasting taxpayers' dollars on something like that. And once again, I think the library is fine, needs some repairs, okay? Like anything else, it gets old. I've had a number of repairs on myself, so I kind of know that. But I like the atrium, like to keep it the way it is, don't want a new roof put on it, just want it re-glazed.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Any other audience communication? Good evening.
Welcome home, President.
Hey, thank you.
My name is Lynn Mills, I live in Plymouth, on Plymouth Road. And after the March 12th meeting, I went over to our library. It's only 37 years old. I don't know who's in charge. It looks dull and boring. I then went over to the Plymouth Library. It's lovely, it has nothing to do with age. It was built in 97. They added another floor. I wrote you, Mr. President, you've been busy. They said they need more room, not less room. And maybe if somebody put some energy into the building we have right now, some shelving, some books, some displays. Go take a look at the Plymouth Library. It's beautiful. And they have an atrium. They said it leaks all the time. They said atriums leak. Fix it. Save the building, it doesn't deserve to be torn down. It's 37 years old. Who's the youngest person here? We don't need to be put out to pasture when we get a little old. Don't tear down the building. And public safety, we need public safety. I'll support public safety, but if you put bike paths and frill in with a public safety millage, I'll do everything to convince everybody to vote it down. That's where I stand on millages. For public safety, we have enough parks, enough bike trails. Don't throw the fluff in with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Laura Janica, 2965 Munger. Everybody's talking about the library bang wagon, so I thought I'd tell you about a library I saw this weekend in Flint. Y'all know what Flint is. 79,000 people live in Flint. Let that sink in. They have an updated library, it was built in 1958. They gutted it in 2000. It is now a state-of-the-art library, 95,000 square feet. So, if we can't compete with Flint with 79,000 people, we're in bad shape. But I say, if they can fix a 1958 library, we can fix a 1989 library.
Thank you. Any other audience communication? All right, seeing none, I am going to jump to council. If council has any comments, Councilwoman Morgan.
Yeah, I just wanted to respond to Mr. King's statement regarding the police department. And, you know, I spent, Mr. King, I spent 25 years in that police department, you know, as a police officer. We've had floods in that building. The heating system is outdated by many, many years. It's the old pump system, so you, it pumps water through there, through the department to heat it up. There's no way to get any actually, any forced air in there. There's a lot of big issues with that. A matter of fact, just a quick story. I was sitting at my desk, and we had a little bit of rain outside, and the ceiling caved in and dumped a lot of, a bunch of water on my computer and everything I was working on. The foundation is cracked. There's a lot of issues with that. Matter of fact, right in the vehicle maintenance garage, the plumbing, for no particular reason, cracked and dumped feces all over the place. The building is just a patch job. We have to continue to fix that. So, I just wanted to kind of rebut what your statement was regarding that building. I don't normally do that, but in this case, I lived there for 25 years, for the most part. And I know exactly what it is. The lockers are outdated. They're these little school lockers that we have in the basement when officers have boots, vests, helmets, riot gear, and everything else you can think of, including weapons, and you can't fit them all in there. It's so outdated that we have more police officers, for the most part, than we have lockers. So, there's, it needs to be, it needs to be fixed in the right way, meaning we need to have a new police department and something done right that fit the times. So, that's all I have to say about that, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Morgan. Anything else from council? No, Mr. King, can't do that. With that being said, I'm going to jump right into new business with item number one. Is a request to authorize appropriation and expenditure, comes to us from the Department of Public Works, for the emergency repair of vacuum truck number 342 from budgeted funds. Good evening, how are you?
Good evening, Council, good, how about you?
Good.
Ryan Frill, Department of Public Works. This here is vacuum truck number 342, it's a 2021 unit. While in the field, the upper hydraulic boom cylinder malfunction caused the boom to not retract anymore. Due to the nature of the repairs, we were not able to handle this in-house. So, we transported it to vacuum truck rentals on Newburgh Road here in Livonia. They're able to make all the repairs, they completed them all, now the truck's back in service. We are asking council to request, we are requesting council to approve the request of payment to vacuum truck rentals in the amount of $24,492.20 from budgeted funds.
Thank you.
Be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Counsel?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Frill, for being here this evening. I know when these trucks are, they're used and abused out there, and these things happen. I know that the staff and whatnot didn't, you know, wasn't, you know, foul play or whatnot, these just things happen. They're abused pretty, pretty hard because of the nature of the business they do. So, it's unfortunate that we got to spend the money, but they are, they're a big use for our city, and they help clean our sewers, help keep our sewers clean and whatnot. So, Council, I'd like to offer approving on consent, if there's no objection from my colleagues.
We have an approving on consent. Any comments from council? Anything from the audience? Seeing none, you have an approving on consent. We're going to move on to item number two. Is a request to waive the formal bidding process and authorize purchase of one sewer line rapid assessment tool. Comes to us from the Department of Public Works to be used by the sewer department from budgeted funds.
Right, Council, this is a piece of equipment called an SL RAT, which stands for Sewer Line Rapid Assessment Tool. It uses acoustic inspection, it's sound waves from manhole to manhole, and it gives you a score of 0 to 10, meaning the sewer's blocked, or 10, the sewer's wide open. We demoed this piece of equipment for over a week with our staff, put them out to the field, made sure we had buy-in with our staff. We did over 8,000 feet roughly every day. Then we followed up with our CCTV camera to demo, to make sure everything was good with the scores. The department really likes this piece of equipment, it'll help us assess sewers faster. We are looking to purchase one of these with using the rest of our remaining funds from the Ford donation project of $19,442.87 and budgeted funds of $16,032.13 for a grand total of $35,475. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
That's, that's awesome. Mr. Zalinsik, this is like the Paserating for sewers.
I'll stay on the streets.
Counsel?
I'd like to offer an approving on consent.
We got an approving on consent. I just want to just tell you that this is when it, I mean, nothing, everything doesn't seem cool other than Teenage Mutant Ninja Turtles in the sewers, but listen, this is something that could proactively help us with preventative maintenance, and kudos to you guys for bringing it forward. Give it to Councilman Donovan.
Thanks, Mr. President. Mr. Frill, so you think, you anticipate this could help us save money, kind of narrowing down water main breaks or sewage breaks and whatnot?
Yeah, absolutely. So, again, our staff's still learning that we're going to build a program and things like that. You know, we inspected 8,000 feet in one day. That's a lot of pipe. And all the scores were good. We'll bring the data back, we'll review it, and we'll let them know, hey, do we need to clean it? Do we not have to clean it? Do we need to fill it, things like that? So, you're saving time on just cleaning the sewer, just to clean the sewer type thing. Or you might find an issue before it's an issue affecting our residents.
What's the lifespan on a piece of equipment like this?
Talking with other communities, they have sets that are 12-plus years old, and they're still working, and they do sell parts to fix them and upgrade them as needed.
Great, thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yeah, absolutely. Anything else from council? Anything from the audience? If you'd like to, now, is this on this item? All right, come on up.
My name's Kathy Shave, 18369 University Park Drive. My question was, is why are we waiving a formal bidding process? Are there other comparative tools that you're looking at also? Or, that's what it says here, which always concerns me.
If you could just address this, and then, through the chair, I can ask Mr. Frill. No, it's just our Roberts rules.
Don't look at him, look at you. I can do that.
You can, give me the questions, and we'll make sure that...
Why are we waiving the formal bidding process?
Now, this is your floor, I'm, you know, finish up, and then...
Oh, okay, and then you talk? I guess I don't know what else to say.
This is your time, no, it's your time, I just want to make sure that you have it, and then we can get you some answers.
And I haven't been in front of this council in a long time. I wasn't living here for a while. I actually owned an engraving business in Livonia, and came to a few different meetings. And when I see ignoring a bidding process, it brings up a lot of red alerts. There's got to be other comparative tools. And I know, no offense to anyone in the room, about the Buddy system. So, and it might have nothing to do with it. I'm just asking, I'd like to know why we would waive the formal bidding process.
Absolutely, no, and I appreciate that, and I won't put Mr. Frill on the spot unless he has an answer for it. Kind of being in the same type of field, having to go through the procurement process, there's a lot of cooperative purchasing agreements out there that you can tie on to. I don't know if this one specifically is, but...
I can answer if you don't mind.
There you go, yep.
It's actually a sole-source piece of equipment. No one else has any type of equipment like this. So, that's why, that's why we're waiving the bidding process.
And that's where I was going to go next, and something that usually has a lot of innovative practices, there's really no comparables. I think last year, we actually had some kind of a space robotic vacuum cleaner that was kind of new, even line striping. And so, as this technology comes out, and I think over the last four years, we've introduced SCADA system, which has been long overdue to ensure that we have preventative measures. So, on something like this, me personally, at least from a leadership role, I applaud the innovation factor for bringing it forward, and you've got the identifying factor of a sole source. So, hopefully, this thing, you know, an ROI is one, one issue that we save it, you know, gets saved from using this preventative measure, so. Gives you a little context. And obviously, we do have a motion on the table, so the vote would be official at the next meeting.
Okay.
All right? Well, thank you. All right, so we have an approving on consent. Is there any other comments from the audience? Seeing none, we're going to move on to item number three. Is a request to approve a two-year contract extension with DeAngelo Brothers. This comes to us from the Department of Public Works to perform water main taps and service connections along with emergency water and sewer repairs at various locations throughout the city in an amount not to exceed 375, what is it? 1,375,000 annually from budgeted funds? Floor's yours.
Yep, so it's exactly what you said. This is our water taps, service connections, and emergency repair contract with DeAngelo Brothers. The department would like to exercise the two-year extension offered in the current contract with DeAngelo Brothers. Council Resolution 19822, with all the current pricing and contract amount being held the same. The extension will go through July of 2027, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Vice President?
Thank you, Mr. President. DeAngelo Brothers has been a great community partner to us in this field, and the fact that we negotiated this contract back in 2022, and they're willing to extend it till 2027, is pretty amazing. Kind of to answer, we would be foregoing the competitive bidding for this, waiving the formal bidding as well, because there would be no really advantage to the city to do that. If we can pay 2022 prices all the way through 2027, that's a win for the city. So, I would be happy to offer an approving on consent.
Councilman Donovan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thanks, Mr. Frill. DeAngelo Brothers has been doing our water taps and various work in our community for a long time, and that's because they do a great job. They've always kept their prices very competitive. They understand our inspectors, they understand our residents, there's, there are a lot of familiarities with our community, and they're a stand-up company right there on Eight Mile. So, happy to see we're extending with them, and they're going to hold their prices and continue to do a good job. It's pretty important getting our water taps done correctly, and DeAngelo Brothers has a ton of experience in that industry, and they really, they do a lot of communities across Metro Detroit and even further than that. So, thank you, sir.
Yep, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. President.
Anything else from council? Anything from the audience? All right. Is that it?
Yeah, that's it, thank you.
Nice work, man, you did well.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Good to see you. Moving on to item number four, is an award to bid. This comes to us from the Engineering Division in reference to the Robert and Janet Bennett Civic Center Library ADA Bathroom Construction from Budgeted Funds. Do we, so I know that there's been a lot, do you have a report out on this, Mr. Zalinsik?
I have.
Oh, I'm sorry, the mayor's here.
Do you want to go ahead, or do you want me to take this?
I have just a brief description.
Go ahead.
Okay. So, just to let the city council know, obviously, we're trying to use HUD funding to try to update the ADA bathrooms in the city library. Obviously, we worked with DLZ to provide bids, went in for the first go-around. Unfortunately, the cost exceeded that expectation. Then we repackaged the bid package to facilitate, I think, the women's bathroom, and they came back in the amount of $121,740 for that bathroom renovation, as we've been trying to improve the library, as everyone's been requesting over the course of the time. So, the contractor that did that was CNS Construction Management located in Wyandotte. But it's my understanding that the mayor wants to look at maybe using the funds at a different avenue over at the McNamara Towers, I believe, for some potential other avenue of carpeting. And I'll let her speak to that.
Thanks, Mr. Zalinsik.
The floor is yours.
Good evening, council, and thanks for your attention tonight, and for all of the work all of you have put into trying to understand some of the complications around this issue tonight. As you know, about 18 months ago, we started work alongside the city council talking about how we might use some of our community development block grant money, CDBG funds, in order to improve access for the handicapped at the Bennett Library. That conversation started, like I said, 18 months ago, long before we all began contemplating the fact that we probably need a new library. So, in the interest of not putting good money after bad, we went in search of an alternative solution for you. You have a letter in front of you dated March 28th, where we are recommending that for the 24-25 budget for the CDBG funds, that we look at putting that money back into the McNamara Towers. That would allow us to remove the carpeting that's currently installed in Building 2, and it would put vinyl flooring in. This vinyl flooring would go in approximately 82 units, that's all of the units in the MAC Towers 2 building, and improve lives greatly for people that are low income, in our low-income housing project, and provide additional accessibility. These are senior citizens that would have preferred to have this vinyl plank flooring in their rooms. It modernizes the building, it brings us back up to a more contemporary standard, and it's a fix that will last a long time. Putting this money into the Bennett Library, as was originally proposed, might have been a great fix if we were talking about the library remaining. Seeing as we're talking about building a new library, it would be a very short-term fix. You'd be approximately two years with use of that, and then, you know, potentially, the library would be coming down. The good thing is, is that we have some additional opportunity. This, as I mentioned, is the 24-25 budget year, which we're almost through. The CDBG funding runs from a July to June time period. So, very shortly, we're going to be coming before you for the next year's iteration of that. And it is very possible that if we found that we were not going to move the Bennett Library, that we might be able to accommodate the ADA bathroom in that budget. And then, we would not lose any money at all. We would be able to take this year's funds, put it toward a useful purpose, and then, if we needed to, we could look at funding for next year. So, we offer you that as a solution.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to offer to put this in the Capitol Outlet Committee for further discussion.
We have a motion to put it in the Capitol Outlet Committee. Council, any further motions? Seeing none. I'm going to go back...
Mr. Chair, if I might, if that ends up being the council's resolution, and by the way, I happen to think that's a great solution. It keeps this alive, and it keeps our eye on it. We will very shortly be bringing before you then a proposal to take this year's funding and put it into the McNamara Towers building, at which point, you will have reserved space for further discussion potentially about using next year's funding for the library, and we'd appreciate that.
Awesome, thank you. I'm going to go to the audience. If you're here for item number four, make your way to the podium, you have two minutes.
Hi, Barbara Glover, 3328 at Myrna Court. A couple of things to say. In 1990 or '91, the United States government passed the ADA law, which requires buildings like the library and this building to have handicapped accessible bathrooms. This building, it's not handicapped accessible, you couldn't get in there with a wheelchair. The same is true with the Bennett Library. Both bathrooms, the one on the second floor, doesn't even have a handicap stall. And the one in the atrium, you can't get into the bathroom if you have, in a wheelchair. There's no button to press to get in the door. I think this is an urgent problem. That library, when it was built, should have had those bathrooms put in. I don't know why 30-some years have gone by without addressing this problem. Our citizens, our elderly, a lot of people in this city are getting older, having, starting to have medical problems, already having medical problems. It's great that we might be able to fix the McNamara Towers. My grandma lived there many years ago. However, you know, I grew up in this city, and I'm just surprised that this bathroom hasn't been fixed. I'm starting to have medical problems, I might want to use the library. If I'm in a wheelchair, I'd want to be able to get in there and use the bathroom. So, even if we do build this new library, so for the next couple of years, the handicapped people of the Livonia and people, other people coming into the city, they're not supposed to be able to use a bathroom in their library? Do you really think that that's fair? It's not. I think this is a big issue of fairness and rights. You know, these are people that are being discriminated against because we don't provide them with adequate bathrooms, including this building. You know, they don't, you don't even have Zoom meetings for this council anymore, is from my understanding. So, if you're handicapped, how can you come here and sit and participate in these meetings? Because you can't use the bathroom over there, you're just supposed to go in your pants? I think this is a serious issue, and I think we should fix out the bathrooms there. You know, at least put a porta-john out in front of the building then for handicapped people, like at least let them have something.
That's time. Thank you. Good evening again.
Laura Janica. Before I start, I noticed that the mayor said two years, and from the handouts, it was looking like three years. So, I thought it was 2028, so that's a discrepancy that's on you guys. But I wanted to read something from Hillary, a lot of people know who she is. She's in a wheelchair, she's much younger than me, and needs a lot of help to get around, but she does like to get around. She wrote, "It feels like a constant fight to remind the city that disabled does not mean senior, and that not all seniors are disabled." mean senior, and that not all seniors are disabled. Accessible bathrooms in a public building versus more accessible flooring in a private building and restricted to senior residences isn't a very even trade-off." So that's from, that's from her. And I've also heard of a lot of people that have children in wheelchairs. It's not just people 90 and can't walk. I mean, there's children that want to come to the library. This administration has had six years to comply with this ADA law, not to mention it's just cruel to people. A lot of city commissions are meet at the library, and Carrie does her excellent coffee hours there as well, but it's not accessible. Many people are excluded from very valuable city information. State reps have met there and given out information. The only accessible municipal buildings that we have that I'm aware of is the ADA, is the, that are ADA, is the DPW building, and what's the other one? The Rec Center has one room in there. And I, what if the millage doesn't pass? That's a whole nother thing. And I don't even, I can't even imagine this is going to happen tomorrow. It probably will take four months before this is even built, the way the things go in this way, but it's three more years.
That's time. Thank you.
Hello, Ralph Brown on Gulfview Street. Again, I'm here for the library, and I think the restroom should be fixed for everyone. And I think, I admire that the mayor's trying to help the seniors at McNamara Tower, but you have to weigh the priorities out, and I think the good of the public would be to fix the bathrooms. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a record for my speaking engagements this evening, but Christopher Martin. And a little familiar with this, back in 96, that'd be 1996, by the way, I was actually given a prescription to get a wheelchair by one of my doctors. Had a problem walking at the time, and I decided not to do that. And so I took a lot of physical therapy, and then walked with forearm crutches for a while, and then went to a cane, and, which I occasionally have in one of my cars, in case I do need to use it, in case my legs get tired after a while. So I look at this as it's appalling. It's actually, it's appalling that this hasn't been taken care of years ago. You should be ashamed of yourselves, some of you guys. And to delay this over some carpeting? You gotta be kidding me, Mayor. Carpeting over this? I think if we get back to integrity, this is really a poor decision on her part. That's the way I'm looking at it. I've been in the city 72 years, okay, seen a lot of stuff, but yeah, I wouldn't drag my feet on this, okay, by too many committee meetings, okay? I put forth that this be, you know, don't let this turn into another year of a 10-minute grinding job, okay, on a trip and fall in front of the library, okay? Let's not do that. But this is something that should have been adhered to under the law years ago. That's what should have taken place. So that's the way I feel about it.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Would the maker of the motion be okay with placing that item on consent?
Yes.
Thank you.
For the committee.
Yeah.
Thank you. With that being said, we went to the audience. I'm going to now move on to item number five. Is a proposed amendment to Livonia Code of Ordinances as amended, comes to us from the Department of Law, to amend Sections 110, 120, and 220 of Title VI, which is Animals, Chapter 1, Pet Licensing Policies. Mr. Carter?
Yep. So this stems from several conversations that we've had internally with the Clerk's Office, with our Animal Control Office, and with DPW. The Clerk's Office, in examining a lot of our policies and current procedures, noticed some discrepancy between some of their forms and the current pet licensing ordinance. The pet licensing ordinance copied word-for-word a portion of the state statute on, that requires pet licensing, but did so in a way that left many residents without the ability to get pet licensing. It currently reads that our licenses go for either a year or three years, and if your animal's rabies vaccine would expire more than a month before the license would expire, you're not eligible for a new license. The state law has since been changed to offer an exception to that, and our ordinance did not match that exception. And so that's part of what we're putting forward here, an exception to allow just one-year licenses, but if you have a current rabies vaccine for your dog, when you apply for the license, you get a license for that year. Again, having discussed this with Animal Control, they're very comfortable with that rule. They propose that they're quite confident that rabies vaccines will actually last more than the duration of that year, so that there's no safety issues implicated. And then additionally, we just did some cleanup in the language to clarify that you are allowed to have up to six animals, three cats and three dogs. The previous language said you could have three cats and/or dogs for a total of three, but obviously, many people have six animals already, and we didn't want anybody to lose their pets. And in talking with Animal Control, they were already sort of reading the rule that way in many instances. And then lastly, we cleaned up some of the language related to duplicate licenses. We don't actually allow people to get a duplicate license, we allow people to get a replacement license.
Awesome. Sounds like more of a housekeeping issue.
Yep.
Counsel, do I have direction?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'll be happy to offer approving on consent. This sounds like a lot of cleanup and housekeeping for legal.
Now, this would be a first read.
It would be a first read.
A first read, sorry. Throw the regular for the first read, yeah.
And now, if this all goes through, I can get another animal.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I just want to mention that we did get some emails, some calls from our residents regarding this being a problem, and so I'm glad it's being taken care of. I'm sorry that some of our residents had to go through some stressful weeks before they knew that this was on the road to being fixed, so thank you very much for this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President, either to our city attorney or city clerk. Since we're taking this action to rectify an issue, what happens between now and when the ordinance takes effect? What are we doing to help our residents when they come here?
Currently, we're handling them on a case-by-case basis. As long as they have a current rabies certificate that's more than six months expiring, we're allowing them to get their license. If not, we're asking them to come back in a few weeks, and we have told everyone there will be no penalty if you come in after June 1st. So it's all based on when they can get their veterinarian appointments. So the residents will not be penalized for this.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President.
Anything else from council? Anything from the audience? You're good.
Kathy Shea, 18369, University Park Drive. I just want to say thank you. My friend actually posted the comment, and we were, pet owners were all around, we're in uproar, there was over 200 comments about, "What do you mean, I can't get a license?" So I guess tonight I'll go home on Facebook and said it's been resolved, so, because it does seem to work when it's on Facebook.
Fantastic.
So I just want to say thank you for taking care of this quickly. It didn't make any sense that we couldn't get a license, we were vaccinated all the way to, you know, November. Thank you.
There you go. Thank you. All right. With that being said, we're going to move on to item number six. Is a proposed amendment to Livonia Code of Ordinances as amended, comes to us from the Department of Law, in reference to Title III, Chapter IV, Financial Ordinance, in order to establish a chief financial officer position and designate the reporting responsibilities under said CFO. Mayor, the floor is yours.
Good evening, council, thank you. And this has been referred to the Department of Law because they're serving as the coordinating department within the city on these changes. But I do want to take a moment here, just at the beginning, to introduce this item, because it is going to be reflected in Items VI, VII, and VIII. So it'll be a comprehensive decision that we're asking for your assistance on. What we're going to propose tonight is a change to the structure of our Finance and Accounting Department, and it does a significant number of things that are beneficial to the department. The first, and probably the most important, is that these changes recognize the need for increased strategic planning within our Finance Department. We have benefited greatly from our past two finance directors and the amount of time and effort that they can put into financial planning and the strategy around that. We see that body of work growing, and we see that there is potentially a need for additional level of service in that area. So creating a chief financial officer is the first phase of this request. It's going to be the item that you're discussing most immediately now, but I want to continue on and help you to understand how creating that position really does begin to affect the work of the department. We want to make sure that we keep that finance director position in place, but the finance director's position will be focusing primarily on the accounting function that's necessary, that area where the skills and the talents of a CPA are most required. And then the third thing that this reorganization, a couple more things, one of the third thing that it's going to do is that it is going to place that emphasis on capital planning management that we've all been talking about for quite some time, placing a capital planning manager within the Finance Department. You may recall that we were working with you earlier in the year to create a capital planning director position, and we struggled, quite frankly, with where that ought to be positioned. And because we couldn't figure out where it should be positioned, we had it as a department had, reporting right to the mayor. We've given it some continued thought, and we believe that if we put a chief financial officer in, who is somebody who reports directly to the mayor, that that capital planning manager position really ought to reside within the Finance Department, so that there can be that long-range strategic planning, that outlook for our capital investment, for all of that investment that we're going to be looking to during the course of passing the upcoming bond proposal. We also are looking to put the capital or the communication, not communication, Information Services, back into Finance. You may recall that we took that out, and again, it's always been a direct report to the mayor, but we made it its own standalone department. We're asking to go back, we've revisited that, and we really think that a big part of how we drive things to move further faster is by closely aligning the work that an Information Services Director does with the work that a finance manager, a finance director, a finance department is doing. And that really is the true vision for what you want an Information Services Department to be doing, to begin to realize those efficiencies that lead to cost savings. So we think that that additional support that would come from an overarching finance officer, chief financial officer, to an Information Services Director, is going to be extremely beneficial in making that a much more productive department and able, capable of advancing us further faster. So we have with us this evening Debbie Lichtenberg, the head of our Finance Department right now as Director of Finance. She's going to talk to you a little bit more about the operation side and where we see the benefits of this reorganization at. There are some market forces that are coming to bear on all of this. It is getting extremely difficult to find a CPA who's capable of operating at both that strategic level, that high forward-thinking strategic level that we need, and somebody that's capable of managing the day-to-day operations, the accounting functions of the organization. Janine Libel's here to address that. And then finally, there are ordinance changes that are involved in this, so when we have questions around that, we've got Carter Fisher, obviously, with us this evening. So if you don't mind, I'm going to turn this over to Debbie Lichtenberg at this time, and we're here to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Hello.
Thank you. I'm Deborah Lichtenberg, Director of Finance, and really, this is the next step in the evolution of the Finance Department. We started this, down this path, last budget season when we added a Budget and Fiscal Services Manager. Really, the role of the Finance Department takes on two parts. One, the accounting function is the keepers of the record. They're looking backwards, making sure that the transactions that have happened are properly accounted for. But the Finance side is really that forward-looking, the planning, the strategy, how are we going to keep moving things forward? And as our Director of Civil Service likes to say, "The finance director counts the beans, but a CFO would decide where to plant them and help them grow for the future." So that's really the next step that we're looking to take in creating that more strategic role, but having a firm technical base in the finance director role continuing forward. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Yes. Councilman Donovan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm really, it's unfortunate, we had this really great chart that we had presented to us, so my ask to you is, can the administration please provide us some of these charts and graphics that you guys provided, which really succinctly laid out, because there's multiple positions being moved around here? And my initial reaction was bloating of government. We're creating new department heads, we're creating new positions, but when you provided that succinct chart, it really gave us a better understanding of where the positions are being moved around in the community. So I'd like that to be provided to us before the next meeting, please. Can you kind of go back into, there's a few positions that we've rearranged in the community, we are proposing, we'll see later on in the agenda, to get rid of a position, and moving around another position. That's why I asked for that graphic, because that really just provided a lot of contextual substance to help out people understand what is happening here. With all this movement taking place, we're only spending an additional $9,000 in the budget, is that correct?
That's correct. So I'll walk you through the changes. Basically, in, as we'll get to the next agenda item or down on the list, we currently have a position titled Director of Capital Improvements. That is a director-level position.
That City Council created and approved recently.
In the budget, correct. It has not yet been filled, so that is a vacancy, but that already has budget funds set aside. In a subsequent motion, we'll be asking for an ordinance change to eliminate the capital, the Director of Capital Improvement position, and shift those budget funds to the CFO position. So that is a wash. There's no change in the budget there. The Finance Director position remains at the level that it is, so no change related to that. The only change with the Finance Director is the, its direct reporting line is now to the CFO, but it remains an appointed position per the charter. The Information Services Director is, again, just a lateral move, no budget changes, just changing that reporting structure, as the mayor mentioned. The, the fourth change that would come, as the mayor mentioned, is the creation, so instead of that Director of Capital Improvement, we will now have a Capital Planning Manager, much along the same lines as the Budget and Fiscal Services Manager that we previously added. We currently have a vacant position that was recently vacated through a retirement within the Finance Department, which is the Assistant Chief Accountant position. What we are proposing doing is using the budget funds from that vacated position to fund the new Capital Planning Manager position. We do feel that the level of expertise that we are looking for for that position warrants a slight upgrade in the salary structure, and that would take the top of the budget, which for the Assistant Chief Accountant is currently at $92,912, to the new level for Capital Planning Manager, top grade would be $103,688. So that is where the difference you mentioned of $9,776 comes from. So there are no new positions, we are simply re-titling and slightly changing some of the reporting structure within the organization.
Thank you for that explanation, and as I mentioned earlier, we'll see later on in the agenda, we'll be removing an ordinance to get rid of that Capital Planner Director position, which I think is important to keep the ordinance clean. And I think it's also important, you did a great job explaining that, we've gotten that information, but it does a lot for people to, the mental hurdle, sometimes you have to figure out where these positions are. So I think that graphic that was provided to council, explaining that, illustrating some of these movements, will be very beneficial to some of these movements, will be very beneficial to not only the council, but the residents. I'm looking forward to that being added as a new data. Mr. President, I'd like to offer a first read on this.
Okay. Thank you. Any comments else from counsel? Counselwoman Buzinski?
Yeah. I'll just say, you know, again, to kind of reiterate, all members of counsel have been briefed by the administration on this, so while, you know, I think it kind of feels clunky in this environment, or that we might not be talking so much about something that is a big change. It is because we've had an opportunity to ask a lot of questions and learn more about what the expectation is. Personally, you know, the capital improvement position was, you know, what I felt a big victory, really important, especially as we talk about the condition of our buildings, looking to invest in new facilities in the year and years ahead. I feel confident in this new movement of that position from a directorship to a manager position. I think having a CFO and a capital improvement manager will kind of put more eyes and attention experience on making sure that our city planning is done well, and that we're investing in the areas that need our attention, and that we're doing so responsibly from a fiscal standpoint as well. So I just wanted to add that.
Thank you. Counselman Donovan?
Thanks, Mr. President. To our city attorney, Mr. Fisher, on page three, item Section 4, 304115, it talks about division of capital planning, capital planning manager duties. It's all redlined. Are you removing that from the ordinance, or can you help better explain?
Sorry, that's an addition to the ordinance, and we'll submit a clean copy of that. It was redlined to show the additions, but we'll submit a clean copy for clarity as well. But those are, those are the duties that were previously housed in the capital planning department ordinance that are now being moved into the finance ordinance, given the sort of new housing for that position. But as I said, we'll submit a clean copy so that it's totally clear. That language is being removed from one ordinance and added to the finance ordinance.
And that division of capital planning will be underneath this CFO position, which is why you added this language to the ordinance?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. President.
Anything else from counsel? All right. So we have a first read on that. Anything from the audience on this item? All right.
Moving on to item number six, is a proposed amendment to Livonia Code of Ordinances as amended, comes to us again from the Department of Law in reference to Title III, Chapter IV, in order to establish a chief financial officer position. Oh, no, I'm sorry, this, we're on item number seven. Look at that. We're all having a late night. There we go. Item number seven, proposed amendment to Livonia Code of Ordinances as amended, Department of Law in reference to Title II, Chapter 23, Department of Information Systems, in order to designate the city's chief financial officer as a direct manager of the Director of Information Systems. So this, obviously, we've had kind of a rundown on it if you need clarification, but feel free to ask the questions you need.
I'll offer first read.
So we have a first read? Do you have a question?
Yeah, for the administration, maybe for the mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Are we worried, I know we're talking about putting the, this person, this IT person underneath the CFO position now. Are you worried that things will get lost in translation, you know, with IT being so prevalent in today's world and technology continuing to just evolve at a rapid speed? Are we creating too much red tape by putting them underneath another different department and not maybe articulating or delivering the message that always needs to be delivered to the mayor?
Yeah. I think what's important about this is that, and this has become especially relevant as we've explored the role of IT as we plan for future buildings and new development, is that their role is so expansive, and it touches on every single aspect of what's going on in the city in terms, especially of how we can deliver service better. And when you look at who's going to be prioritizing what services need delivered better, it really is going to be that CFO. So we're not looking at it necessarily as creating more red tape, but more support, more direction, more focus, you know, just somebody saying, "This is the direction we need to go in to drive down costs. What can we do on the IT front?" And it becomes one of those immediate asks. You know, it's in your department, it's housed there, so right away, you turn to IT for solutions. And we know that technology is going to be one of the greatest areas where we can see costs driven down at. So rather than having it in its own separate department and people scrambling to figure out, you know, is this a communication issue that helps us, or is it an IT issue? It goes right away, it's in that department. Everybody's working a lot more cohesively around cost and making sure they're as low as they can be.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks.
Anything else from counsel? Anything from the audience? Mr. King, you have two minutes.
Yeah, I was just watching at home, and I was just confused. Is this creating a new position, or it's not creating a new position? That's...
There's a lot of restructuring with a small net, in theory.
Yeah, I saw it was an increase in money, but it sounded to me like there's a position that we budgeted for that we haven't hired yet, so we're using that budgeted money to then appoint someone, so it's going from someone being hired to being appointed. It sounds like it's becoming an appointed position instead of a open hire. I mean, I could be mistaken. Just asking.
Thank you, Mr. King.
Mr. Chair, can we clarify that, just so there's no misconception?
Absolutely.
It is going from an appointed position and remaining an appointed position.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Anything else from the audience?
All right. So we have a first read on that item. We are now going to move on to item number eight, is a proposed amendment to Livonia Code of Ordinances as amended, comes to us from the Department of Law in reference to Title II, by repealing Chapter 25 as the capital improvement ordinance in its entirety. Again, this all goes kind of a packaged thing, which we've had an overview. Counsel, do I have direction?
I'll offer a first read.
We have a first read. Anything else from counsel? Anything else from the audience?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I guess just for everyone watching at home, so we understand what just happened here, when the City Council wanted a capital improvement director, someone to look at the capital needs of our future buildings, the City Council Administration created that new position, which we've not filled that position just yet. Now that we're creating a CFO position, some of this restructuring is taking place, that no longer will be a department head, that will be someone that falls under that CFO that we've been talking about. So now, the City Council is removing that ordinance so that the, so that our laws are all consistent, and we don't just have an ordinance sitting out there with a vacancy and kind of doesn't make sense. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I might, just to wrap things up at our end, I want to thank all of you for taking the time that you did individually with us to sit down and really understand and learn what this meant to the city. And I think you all really appreciated how forward this is going to take us, and this is a very forward-facing effort on our part. It moves us toward a better ability to do multi-year budgeting, which we all believe is really critical. It puts us in a position to really embrace that priority-based budgeting that we talked about last year during our budget cycle, and to be well on the way to addressing the capital planning needs that we know have been missed over the course of time in the city. And I do think that this is a structure that is going to help us to manage a lot of these projects better as we move forward. So again, I want to thank you all for taking the time. This is complex, it's complicated, but I think all in all, I think we're going to come out far ahead with this one. So thank you again. And we will get you that sketch that you're looking for, the diagram, okay?
Thank you. With that, that concludes the study agenda. If there's any comments from the audience for items that are not on the agenda, please make your way up to the podium. Name and address. You've got three minutes.
Hello there. Eileen McDonald, 36099 Brookview. I just have a question, and I don't know if you can even answer this because it sort of relates to an item on the agenda, but when you had discussion about the award bid for the bathrooms for the Bennett Library, is that going to committee, or is that on the consent agenda? Because I didn't get a clear understanding when you...
Oh, I'm sorry. So yeah, no, the item to go to committee is going to be on the consent, so the motion at the present to go to committee is going to be included, not the award.
Okay. All righty. So it's just going to be a discussion?
It'll just be, it'll just be approval to put it in the committee.
Okay. All right. And there'll be announcements then and postings in reference to that information?
Yeah, we'll, I'm sure, try to get that rolling pretty quick so it doesn't stay stagnant.
All right. All right. I think it's important that we address this, and, you know, even if it was next week, it's important to have this item taken care of. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. I think you ought to abandon audience communication when a counsel person directs to somebody who talks, we get 30-second rebuttal. Otherwise, you've got to wait to the end of the meeting. But I want to address you, Scott, since you addressed me directly. I will concede that you're an expert on the condition of the police station as is and your experience. I honor your opinion. If you'll concede that I am an expert on building, and I can, I would love for you to give me a tour of that facility, and I will fix and address every single thing that's wrong. I had a house built in the 20s, had a coal chute, okay? We put an HVAC system in that, okay? And then I had a house, another house built in the 20s with radiators, removed them, and we have a high-velocity Unico system, and you're familiar with that. So I agree, if there's an issue, shame on the city for having police officers sit at a desk and a ceiling fall on their head. Shame on us, is what I say. If that's a problem, fix it. Every single thing can be fixed. If your house leaks, your roof leaks, you don't tear down the house, you fix the roof. Every single thing that you're talking about, every building in the city, can be addressed. It's always cheaper to renovate than remove. These, all these proposals, people moving around, giving people more money, this, again, speaks to me, people are inside the bubble or outside the bubble. There's something called Doge going on in this country. People are doing more with less. People are losing their jobs. These are government people. You have to be aware of what is going on in the world. We don't give people more money. People are doing more for less. We're being more efficient. So I just think you need to consider those things, and especially looking at this giant project, and we know where the world economy is going. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. King. Any other audience communication? Seeing none, go back to counsel. If counsel has any parting words, which I think we can safely show six for adjournment, if I'm wrong. Good night, Livonia.